Hello, I'm Pastor Dave and welcome to our fourth session of our Bible study on the book of Acts. In this session, we're going to look at chapters 11, 12, 13, and 14. But if you've done the reading, you can see that this isn't exactly going to be an overly long passage. Some of the chapters are long, but the information in there is nothing really groundbreaking. And you're going to see this as we focus more on the missionary journeys of Paul, that there is some repetition to this, it's just the details that differ. Now, as we look at starting at chapter 11, we're picking up where chapter 10 leaves off. Because chapter 10 includes the story of Cornelius with Peter going to Cornelius's house after having a vision, being welcomed in, and the Holy Spirit being poured out on the Gentiles. Now, in the first 18 verses of chapter 11, we're getting a kind of history report on the whole thing. And the fact that Luke is repeating this tells us that this is important, that what happened doesn't change. But we're seeing how close the church almost came to being another sect of Judaism. And we'll see that the issue of the Gentile converts is going to keep coming up as we go through Acts. But this is kind of what the issue is. And this leads to a trial for him. Because it was a crime for a Jew to eat with Gentiles. That's why Cornelius didn't even invite him into his house, he stopped Peter before he entered. Because going into the house was a violation of the law, eating with them would be a violation of the law. And Peter notes this. But he also points out that he had six companions, and this is specifically in verse 12, that he was told, "Spirit told me to go in, and I had six people with me." This is mainly about ancient law, because under Egyptian law, seven witnesses were necessary to prove a case. And under Roman law, seven seals were necessary to authenticate a document. So yeah, Peter saying this with six others agreeing with them, they're all saying this, these seven men are saying the same thing, to basically say, "This is what God wants." And at verse 17 especially, it kind of, he hits the nail on the head. Because when questioning about the gift of the Holy Spirit on the Gentiles, they say, "God gave the same gift to them who, as He gave to us, then we, when we believed in the Lord Jesus Christ, who was I that I could stand in God's way?" That's his big argument, is how could he stand in God's way? And this is where we see a shift in the church from being Jewish-centered to really becoming a religion of Gentiles. Because immediately following a verse 19, we're getting into the church in Antioch. And this is where we're seeing the deliberate attempt to reach Gentiles. Because when we look at Acts so far, we see that there are some very deliberate steps. I mean, you have Philip in Samaria, but the Samaritans were half-Jews. And then you have Peter with Cornelius, and it was Cornelius who sought out Peter, not the church searching out Gentiles. But here with the church in Antioch, which really is most of the rest of chapter 11, we're seeing the change where it's a deliberate mission to the Gentiles to bring them to Christ. And Antioch is an interesting place to be the launching pad, launching pad for the church's global mission. At this time, Antioch was the third greatest city in the Roman Empire, just after Rome and Alexandria. It was located at the mouth of the Orontes River. It was 15 miles from the Mediterranean Sea and a very cosmopolitan city. It was also known for being a bit of a sinful city, they were known for their immorality, they were known for chariot racing, and also a very religiously pluralistic city. This was the known location to the temple of Daphne, who was a mortal with whom Apollo fell in love, and the priestesses of this temple were well-known to be prostitutes. But along with that temple, there were temples to Zeus, Apollo, Poseidon, Adonis, Tyche. It wasn't far from the city of Daphne itself that had also temples to Artemis, Apollo, and Ashtar. And this was a city of about half a million, it had a Roman military presence, and it was kind of a crossroads city of the empire. So this was going to be an interesting place to launch the church. And part of the road had already been laid for them. You can see in the verse 20, where men from Cyprus and Cyrene arrived in Antioch and preached the gospel to the Greeks. But they didn't preach it as Jesus is Christ, they preached it as Jesus is Lord. But that would still be the starting point, because the Lord was with them. And truthfully, the best results happened because of God's sovereignty. And as the church leaders heard what was happening, they did want to find out what was going on, so they sent someone to investigate. They've done this before. And the good news is, they sent the absolute right person to do that, and that was Barnabas. Now Barnabas, we've encountered before, where Acts 4:32-37, he was generous to the needy brethren. And also, he was, in Acts chapter 6, verse 27, was one of Paul's early supporters. Moreover, Paul or Barnabas was a Hellenist, Hellenized Jew from Cyprus. So he was one who could easily relate to Gentiles and wasn't this, he wasn't one with a rigid interpretation of the law. You wanted to send Barnabas there, you didn't want to send Paul, for lack of a better way of saying it. And Barnabas, in his exploration there, really saw the need for the right leader for the Antioch church. One that was raised in the Jewish tradition, but could relate to Gentiles. And really, this is when he flexed Saul's calling as the apostle to the Gentiles, because he knew that Saul was the right person, and he also knew Saul had the fruit to do the effort. So ultimately, you have Saul and Barnabas in Antioch for your teaching. But as chapter 11 closes, we do see the importance of an office of the church that doesn't really appear to exist often in the modern church, and sometimes is abused, and that's the office of the prophet. And the prophet had an early role in the church. Because there were pretty much three main roles in the church, according to William Barclay. And they were the apostles, who were the successors of Jesus in the global ministry setting. You have elders who led the local church and were set apart for that role. And then you had the prophets, who were able to foretell the future and foretell the will of God. Basically, they're the ones who are saying, "This is what's going to happen, this is what God wants done." Now, one of the early teachings of the church is found in a document called the Didache. And it does mention the role of prophets, but warns the church about them. Mainly, be careful of the ones who want money or want food as a means of to tell what they know. But at the same token, be hospitable to them. But ultimately, if we want to summarize all of chapter 11, basically, this is the Gentile Jewish church becoming one church, not two separate entities. But at this point, the world rears its ugly head when we get into chapter 12. And part of this comes with the bringing up of King Herod again. And Herod, at this time, I have to get this right. The Herod mentioned here was Herod Agrippa, the son of Aristobulus. I'm going to have this in your study guide, but there are multiple Herods when we look at the New Testament. In Matthew 2, that Herod is Herod the Great. Later in Matthew 14, Mark 6, Luke 3, it's Herod Philip I. There was also Herod Antipas, who was a ruler in Galilee and Peria, and consented to the death of John the Baptist. There's, of course, then there was Archilius, but then Herod Philip II, who was a ruler in, oh, he was basically the founder, Assyriah Philippi. He's mentioned in Luke 3, verse 1. Then there's the Aristobulus, who actually was the son of King Herod the Great, who was murdered by his own father, but his son Herod Agrippa is this one. And we're going to see his prodigy come about later too, and towards the end of our time in Acts, really in the last two weeks of the study, when we see about Agrippa III, Bernice, and Drusilla, the wife of Felix. And again, that's all in there, this, I mainly do this because it helps place the biblical story in the historic narrative. It also helps keep us making sense of who these people are. But at this point, this Herod, he was educated in Rome, he wasn't educated in Jerusalem. He was a classmate of Emperor Claudius, who was more than happy to extend his old friend's role in Judea. And basically, the Herod family were not, 20 Merida calls them an evil family. But basically, they were people pleasers, they were glory seekers, and they were opponents of Christ. And how Herod Agrippa dealt with the church was he went after the leaders. He wasn't like Paul or Saul, who went after everybody. He just went after the leaders. So he arrests James and Peter, who were the leaders of the church. And his main purpose for this was likely to ensure that they weren't a threat to Rome, or the Roman peace. And also, he wanted to curry favor with the Jews that he nominally was one of, that he was upholding the traditions. Mainly to keep his power and influence. And there's some speculation, mainly by Tony Mariba, that James was executed mainly because Herod wanted to see how this was going to go before he moved against Peter, because Peter was much more outspoken. So instead, Peter is arrested. And this is all happening around the time of Passover, which this should help us mirror this back into the passion narrative of Christ, because Christ was arrested after the Passover meal, and his execution was hurried before the Sabbath. We're kind of in that same time here. So Peter is arrested a long, at the time of the Passover, during which you couldn't have a trial, and you can't execute anybody. So the good news for Peter was, he was just put in jail, he wasn't immediately executed either. And what's also interesting is when we look at Peter's arrest, and compare that to how he acted in the garden. He was the one who drew a sword and cut off the servant's ear. Here, he's relying on God. And when we look at what they're doing with him, yeah, in verse 6, "They're keeping him under close guard." There was a Roman unit size called the Quaternio. Quaternion, basically a squad of four. And basically, they had one of those just guarding him. Because they say there, "He was sleeping between two soldiers, bound with two chains, with centuries before the door." These would be going in shifts. So there were multiple people watching Peter. And they were taking this seriously, because under Roman law, if you allowed a prisoner to escape, you would serve their punishment. And since Peter was likely under a sentence of death, more than likely, they were going to keep close guard on him. But yet, in the midst of this, we have a miracle. An angel comes to him and says, "Get up quickly and eat." And the tie-in with this, with the Passover, should also be important, because he's told to get up quickly. We're kind of seeing the exit of story happen again as well, because God is delivering Peter. And it's a quick movement, and also, Peter wasn't anxious, I mean, he had to get, he was sleeping so heavily, the angel had to kick him to be awake, so he can be delivered. And then he goes off to the house of Mary, mother of John Mark. This is a gathering place for the local church. This is where they, possibly where the Last Supper was held, but also, well, really, what we know for certain, the church was there, and they were praying. And Rhoda was the servant guarding the door. And she was so excited when Peter came to the door, because this is a time when the church facing persecution was very cautious about not leaving doors unlocked or on watch. But she was so excited, she forgot to let Peter in. She just ran and said that Peter was free and leaving the fugitive out on the doorsteps. But this is where they tell us also what was moving, coming forward. It does tell us that the leader of the early church is James, the brother of Jesus. Which, one of the interesting things in Roman culture was, if her brother was killed, typically the next oldest brother would take their place in whatever they were doing. So it's, we could go into all sorts of debates whether Mary had other children or not, whatever, but beyond our scope of this study. But for a brother to take the place made perfect sense. But also, this is a brother who didn't believe in Jesus's ministry. You can go back to John 7, Mark 3, it's right there that his family didn't believe. But at this point, Peter reports to James, and then he gets out of there. Because practical wisdom, just because he got out of jail doesn't mean they won't try to find him. But this does also bring up in verse 17 about the qualifications for Jesus's brother to, basically, to fulfill this. And some of this comes from other sources. In 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, verse 7, we're told that Christ made a special appearance to his brother James. But also, there's an apocryphal gospel called the Gospel of the Hebrews, that said that James made a vow to not eat or drink until he saw Jesus again, demonstrating the power of the cross-changing people. Yeah, at this point, Peter's getting out of town. And we get this interesting final six verses here, with the death of Herod. And really, this is more of a warning. It's kind of a feel-good story for us. But it's a warning about some of the opponents of the faith, but also where we place our trust and where we place our priorities. Because Herod was idolatrous, he wasn't really Jewish, and he sought really power and glory. So here, trying to mediate a situation, because people, he wasn't happy with certain people in Tyre and city. So they came to him, and he just ate up the praise when they said he spoke like a god, which is the last thing that should be said. And he was immediately judged by God and killed. And according to the historian Josephus, it was Herod's pride that killed him, as they confused him with God. Not because they confused him with God, but also he enjoyed it. And at this point, the very end, we give word that Barnabas and Saul returned to Jerusalem, they completed their service, and they're bringing John Mark with them to return to Antioch. So at this point, our focus on Jerusalem more or less ends. We're really focusing more on the shift to the first missionary journey of Paul, of Paul and Barnabas. And this takes up first chapters 13 and 14, where they go from Antioch to Cyprus, they preached, and then they go to Asia Minor. Now, chapter 13, this is the church really taking those first steps off into the world itself. And they have an interesting team who's doing this. Because as we look at their team, they have Barnabas, who was a Jew from Cyprus, and the encourager, Lucius, who was from Cyrene in North Africa, Simeon, a Jew with a Roman name, Meneon, who was a man with aristocratic and courtly connections, and you have Paul. Like here, he's still, yeah, he's still Saul, not Paul yet. A Jew from Tarsus in Sicily. So you have different people from different backgrounds going out to do the work of the church. And this starts to show the membership of the church, it was buried. And we also remind how much Antioch was a praying church. But at this point, they're sent out by the Holy Spirit to Cyprus, and you'll get, you've had some of this in the sermon. But Saul and Barnabas go to Cyprus first. And Barnabas probably was excited, this was his home island, he was excited to share the gospel there. And there were Hellenist Jews that had already kind of paved the way for them. So there'd be people that, there were synagogues, so they could do their pragmatic tactic of going to the synagogues first, there were people who already knew who God was. And this is probably a good place to start, because really, Cyprus was known as the Happy Island. They had a great climate, they had wealth from their copper mines, it was a, it wasn't a hard situation to be in. And this is where we're starting to see the change in Saul's name from Saul to Paul. Jews often had two names, like Simon Peter. One Jewish, one Greek. And here, like Saul was a Jewish name, Paul was a Greek name. And by using the name Paul more than Saul, Paul demonstrates how much he's accepting that mission to the Gentiles. So at this point, I get to not stumble over it and just say, "It's Paul." But here in Cyprus, they encounter Vargisus, the false prophet, and Sergius Polus, the Roman proconsul. And what's interesting here is Vargisus, the Jewish sorcerer, which there are a number of passages that prohibit that, Jewish sorcery, is the problem. Sergius Polus wants to hear God's word and wanted to know more than just whatever the idolatrous Vargisus was telling him. And this is important, because Romans placed a high value on omens and divination, and superstitious occult leaders really had a lot of influence. But this is also where we start to see how the opposition forms. It's because oftentimes, a pride and materialism. And this battle here, we can really look at, almost like the prophet Elijah against the prophet Jabal in 1 Kings 18, 19 through 30. Except now, they're not fighting over nations, just over the proconsul's soul. And by the time you get to verse 13, Paul is basically the leader, and Barnabas lets it go, it's like, "This is fine." But we're starting to also see another issue. Because now, by the time we get to verse 13, there's a bit of a conflict in the church. As, really, as Paul takes charge, he does have issue with John Mark. And he left to return to Jerusalem. Part of this, we could go, well, is he just returning back to the house? Did Paul send him away? Did he resent Paul's leadership? And this comes about, really, in what we look at next week, when Paul refuses to take him on a next mission. And this actually causes the split between Paul and Barnabas. And truthfully, this is just a reminder that for people, sometimes we have conflict, even when we're doing God's work in the mission field. But we also see that they're starting to move again. Because they didn't, they're en route from Pessy and Antioch into Asia Minor. And they're, this was not a safe route, it was known for plenty of robbers. They didn't preach in Pamphylia. And part of this may come about because of what we see in Galatians 4:13, where Paul mentions when he was there, he was sick. So maybe he wasn't able, physically able to preach. But starting at verse 16, we actually get a sermon. And this is the only full sermon we have from Paul. And we really, it is comparable to Peter's sermon in Acts 2. And this does make sense, because there are many Jews in Galatia, so there's much they would know. And he really divides this into three points. And it's about the royal lineage of David, or Jesus's part in the royal lineage of David. Jesus is the fulfillment of Scripture, and through Jesus, Jesus's forgiveness and deliverance is through Jesus, we experience deliverance and forgiveness, there we go. And he makes really six main points. That was how the coming of Jesus was the consummation of history. History is not purposeless, God always has a purpose. God argues that men did not recognize the coming of God's Son and Jesus Christ. And through their folly, they rejected Christ, could not be defeated. God could not be defeated, and the resurrection is proof of God's agency in the world. The resurrection is the fulfillment of the prophecy made to David. The coming and message of Christ is good news, for in Christ one can find liberating and forgiving power. And it sets the prisoner, the people, free from condemnation. And that, finally, the good news for some is bad news, for they disobey the summons to God. When we look through this, we see the heavily that Paul's made the point that Jesus's tent is confirmed by the resurrection. And this is fully in line with Scripture. And also that the only solution to guilt is in Jesus Christ. I'm going to ask you why they went to Jews first. Paul and Barnabas told the crowds that they needed to fulfill the promises made to the patriarchs first. And this causes a problem. Because one of the things that infuriated the Jews with Paul's message, and really the work of the church, was that God's privileges would go to uncircumcised Gentiles, because they were the chaff. But Jesus sees them as the harvest. And in a mixed city, like some of these were, we had Greek Jews, Romans, and other cultures, this can cause some problems. But one of the interesting things we do see in this as well is the fact of some of the early converts were women. And part of this was the fact that, in general, even the Jewish faith was more attractive to women because of the sexual morality that was in the Jewish faith, as opposed to the Roman world, plus the purity of ethics and cleanliness of life. And some of these women would come into the church and bring their husbands, and that actions, and bring their husbands with them. But others who didn't, who stayed Jewish, would often incite their husbands to go after the church. But as always happens, when things go crazy, Paul and Barnabas move on. And they move on, this time to Iconium, which is 90 miles from Antioch. And this is a state that may possibly be even older than Damascus. Now, it still exists today, it's called Konya. Or Kanye, probably better. And once again, we see the normal thing that we will see time and time again. Paul preaches in the synagogues, Jews get stirred up, and a mob is unleashed. And a lot of this comes about because Paul and Barnabas were effective in their ministry, and it led to people leaving the synagogues and going over to Christ, which caused resentment. And then added to the fact, they wanted to And then added to the fact, they wanted to reach the Gentiles. And the more effective they were, the more opposition they would face. And when we look at the events here in, in Iconium, basically, they're preparing more or less for a lynching. And a lot of this comes from where they're at. In a larger city, Roman law is more likely to be kept. Out in rural settings, sometimes things get out of hand. And one of the things we notice with these two is that they were brave. They're not stupid. They knew to respond to violence. And in this case, they leave and they go to Lystra, which led to something interesting, because when they go in, they healed a man in the city, and the people proclaimed them as gods. And this isn't random. This isn't out of just sheer naivety of what could happen. It's because of local myth, because there was a myth that Zeus and Hermes came to the city disguised as normal people, and no one had ever, no one gave them hospitality, except two elderly peasants named Philemon and Bacchus. And because of the lack of hospitality, Zeus and Hermes wiped out the entire city, except those two. So when Paul healed the cripple, the mind immediately went to that old myth, that Paul was Hermes, the messenger, the Greek messenger, god from the Mount Olympus. And he's talking about his Lord Jesus. It's an interesting mix, because they tied Paul's being a messenger for Christ to being Hermes. But this does remind us that Paul, that really crowds can misinterpret events. I'm sure that surprises everyone. But also that Paul and Barnabas needed to find ways to appeal to audiences that weren't Jewish. We don't know what he says. His sermon here is not recorded. But then from there, they go. While they're still in Lystra, Jews from Iconium and Antioch arrive and tell people how bad Paul and Barnabas are. We will see that again. And it may not have been deliberate, but Lystra was an agricultural center, so they may have gone to buy things and said, hey, those guys are here. They caused problems where we're from. So they go and stone him. They stone Paul. They thought he was dead. And really, as part of the stoning, they go to hide the body, because technically, they, it was an illegal execution. And what's amazing is Paul suffered through it, kind of had that courage to go through it, but also persevered through all the trials he faced. And then from there, they return to Antioch and Syria. And they kind of give the account of what happened. And one of Paul's things, and this should strike home to us, is how Paul never set out to do this alone. Paul warns, would warn people that they would face adversity, but also that we needed to stay together. I mean, that's why even John Wesley noted, no man ever went to heaven alone. He went, and that's why he kind of focused on the planting of churches. And the main three parts he had for a church plant was apostolic instruction, pastoral oversight, and trusting God. Because they knew that really, the only way that they were going to succeed is through God's power. And they focused on their way there. And as we see, as they go places, some locations, we don't have accounts of what they did, like in Perga, but we know they evangelized throughout the way. So that takes us to the end of 14. Now, when we come back next week, we're going to look at chapters 15 through 17. And 15 kind of ends the second first missionary journey, and 16 starts the second missionary journey. And it's kind of broken up this way, just because it kind of picks up where things leave off in a nice way. So I invite you to participate in one of the small groups, whether in PA Furnace or State College, or the Zoom group online, or in any other group you wish to form. In the comment section of this video, there is a link to the study guide just for this session. But also on the website, there's links for an overall study guide of every study guide up to this point in one document. But at this point, I cut you loose to continue to seek what God is telling you in His word.